Good evening, gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate your time this evening for affording citizens and stakeholders an opportunity to comment on the plan that's been presented. My name is Houston Nelson. I live at 2504 Walter Way in Stockbridge, Georgia. I currently serve as the President of the North Bridge Crossing Homeowners Association, and I'm also the General Manager of Molly Mate of Henry County. I didn't come with any prepared notes this evening, so please forgive me. But I did have a couple of questions. I don't know if this allows for any back and forth or not, or if it's strictly me talking and you listening.
Yeah, the format is principally just we're here to receive comments.
Just here to receive comments. Fair enough. Well, then I'll adjust my comments then accordingly. I'm looking at the, as I'm sure everyone here has, and before, I wanted to say, Dr. Maxwell, thank you for your comments and the comments from the Haven House, as well as the young lady with Hands of Hope Clinic. I think these are all fantastic programs, and I've actually referred several people in my community to you, once I found out that you were in existence. My community is made up of about 350 homes. I would say that it's middle-class, but in some cases, it's low to moderate income because several receive assistance. I'm also juxtaposed against two apartment complexes, South Winds as well as Eastwood Village, and they have, combined with our community, about 4,000 residents, based on census tract information and my own research. I was also a recent candidate for city council. But as I look at the outlay of the CDBG funds, I notice that there's a huge gap in meeting a need. I see, you know, senior housing, medical assistance, Head Start for early youth programs. But I'm here today to implore you to reconsider reallocating some funds for what Dr. Maxwell mentioned, which is a Boys and Girls Club. Now, a short narrative, I brought some young people from my subdivision, if they would all stand, everybody that came with me tonight. All of these represent young people that live in my community. They are between the ages of, how are you, young man? Eight years old and up. I'll just leave it like that. Okay. Now, they may later speak or express their reaction a little bit later, but our community had four tennis courts in it. And when I became President, I recognized that I didn't really see anybody playing tennis. The only tennis players I knew were the Williams sisters, and they don't live in North Bridge Crossing, okay? So I came up with a plan, and I presented it to the Board of Directors, which will allow us to convert one of the four tennis courts into a basketball goal. And it has made a tremendous impact, and I hope some of them will have the courage to come up and speak on what that single basketball goal has meant to them in our community. Now, I took a lot of heat for that, as I'm sure you can imagine, because people were afraid that it would attract the wrong kind of people to our neighborhood. But as I mentioned earlier today, if you look at the crime mapping software for Henry County, the wrong kind of people are already here. So with that being said, I recognize an incredible need among our young people to allow them to have activities after school, and for many of them who are jobless, to be able to release some of that, shall we say, pent-up stress. And basketball is one such outlet. Now, I'm not necessarily privy to some of Dr. Maxwell's plans as far as what type of programs the Boys and Girls Club would entail, but I can't help but believe that it would, anything would be better than what we have right now. Because right now, there is nothing in the city of Stockbridge that addresses the needs of young people who, whether they be in school or not, have no place to call their own. And I can speak from personal experience, because I'm originally from California. When mom was still at work and didn't get off till 4:30 in the afternoon, and I'm out of school at 2:15, where did I go? Well, I could hang with the guys that were smoking, well, whatever, down the road. I chose not to do that. I would always make my way down to the rec center, where they had programs for flack football, which I loved. There was ping pong. There was air hockey. There was foosball. There were people to talk to. There were people there that were my age, that I can identify with, that were trying to stay, shall we say, on the straight and narrow path and do what was right. And then I would go home and do my homework. So I implore you again that you reconsider looking at this particular budget. And again, I'm not against anyone having anything. All of these programs, my company actually donates to the Haven House. Every year, Molly Mate sponsors a month-long push, where we ask our customers to donate food goods, dry goods, clothes, anything that victims of domestic violets might need. So I'm very for all of these, but I'm also for the people in my community. When I built the basketball goal, 75 people showed up the first night. We had a block party about a month later, 300 people showed up. There's a community here in Stockbridge that is crying out for someone to take leadership, and I believe Dr. Maxwell is that person, who can create a program in this community that will serve the needs of the middle and lower-class income children, who don't have any place to go and are left wandering our streets. Thank you. Appreciate it.[387.81][387.81][applause]
Good evening. How's everybody doing? My name is Brother Student Minister William Muhammad, and I'm new to the city of Stockbridge. And I echo what my brother Trey is talking about. I just want to share a personal story with the Boys Club that I experienced at a young age, that as I look at the young black men that are here, don't have that same opportunity. You know, we talk about mentorship and how men should get involved in other men's life to teach them how to be young men. Well, when you don't have the avenues, such as the Boys Club, such as, you know, your everyday community centers, such as mentors in the community, then these young black men become a statistic, which we should know, that the prison industry is the number-one industry on the stock exchange. You know, we build plenty of prisons, but we're not building institutions that will teach our young men and women to do the right thing. So in my experience with the Boys Club, where's the director at? Sister, we appreciate you. You know, it was a young man that came to me. I'm an orphan. I didn't have no mother or father in my life. And a young man came to me that worked in the Boys Club and gave me the opportunity to go to the Boys Club, where I could, like Brother Trey said, exhibit my gifts and my talents on the basketball court. Here in the city of Stockbridge, since I've been here, gentlemen, there's no place to go. And we're crying out, as young black men and women, that Henry County needs a place where we can channel our aggression and not become a statistic to the status quo of the prison industry. I have three boys with me, my own sons, and I don't want them to end up in the prison system. And it's so easy to do without an avenue to direct that energy to. So as you're making your plans and you're voting, please keep our children in mind. And I want to leave this scripture with you, the Master Jesus. There were some disciples that were following Jesus, but they weren't giving the people the true interpretation of Jesus. And these disciples were talking about how much they loved Jesus. So Jesus looked at them, and He said, "Suffer the little children to come unto Me." Why did Jesus want the little children? Within our children, there's the Kingdom of Heaven. We can all learn from our children, and sometimes, as adults, we think we know more than our children, as we don't know anything about the programs of the Boys Club. We need to have a cultural revolution. Our children aren't listening to the ministers. Our children are not listening to their teachers. Our children are not listening to their parents hardly anymore. Our children are listening to one another, hip-hop. So if you're granted this money to the Boys Club, we need a cultural revolution, where hip-hop, a studio, is being put in the Boys Club, so that the young men and the young women that have the talent of a gift of gab, to talk about what's going on in the community. That's a release of their energy, can also use that facility as well, among other things. But I just wanted to say that, and please keep that in mind about the children. Please. Thank you. Y'all have a blessed night.[643.66][643.66][applause]
Hi, my name is Johnny Howard. I live in the city of Stockbridge. My address is 2554 Walter Way, and I'd just like to speak for the youth here, for the teenagers and everything, you know, since we didn't have a chance to do so, but it's kind of hard to go after these two great men for what they're doing for the community, but I'm gonna try. I am nervous. Boys and girls, Community Center is nothing but good for the community and will only do good, but for them not to have this, well, only for them children, for only having, you know, a way for them to get into things that really they shouldn't even be a part of to begin with. This is a great outlet for exercise, you know, to communicate with, you know, your community, to, you know, expand your horizons, also to be involved with people that are trying to do positive things, you know, the same way you are. If you are just on the street, you know, outside with people that are just outside doing whatever, you know, eventually they're going to get involved in things that are, you know, very bad for them, you know, in any kind of way, a lot of people can understand that. When I was growing up, I grew up in a rough neighborhood, really rough, you know, and I had a lot of people around me doing very, very, let's just say, bad things. My brother was selling drugs on the street, and my mom was really struggling to support just myself, you know, just trying to jump from job to job. I didn't have a father around, you know, like a lot of black men around. And, you know, for me, when summertime came around, when I was out of school, I used to go to a place called the Jackson Center. I'm from Orlando, Florida, if you guys are familiar with the Jackson Center. Just like the Boys and Girls Club, it was a very great way for me to, you know, do something positive, also to, you know, be with other people that are also trying to do the same things as me, you know? You know, like I said, this is nothing but good for the community, you know? This is something that is, will be very productive, and, you know, will, what can I say? Only bring good things from the youth, you know? You know, please, if I have to say this, bring this to the city of Stockbridge. We really need this, and our youth will be very appreciative. Thank you.[810.23][810.23][applause]
It's the first time I have the opportunity to speak to you as a citizen, and it feels I just want to make a couple of points on this evening. My name is Sandra Vincent. I am a member of the Steering Committee for the Boys and Girls Club, as well as continuing to be an advocate for housing rehabilitation dollars for senior citizens. I think it's very evident by virtue of the statistics that you've received and the information that you've documented in your materials, that that continues to be an area of great need, and the city of Stockbridge and the city of McDonough continue to have the demographic profile, which supports the intent of these dollars. And I feel just a little bit challenged in that I'm making this appeal to the consultants and not to the commissioners, Commissioner Home, because I think this message really needs to go to our commissioners. When I look at the data that you've provided on page 19, one of the things that strikes me is the fact that countywide, our population of 65 years and over, percent of total population is 8%. And we look at the individuals who are under 18 years of age, that number is 29%. Now, that's a stark contrast in terms of population. I'm one of the biggest advocates for seniors, but when we look at the proposed plan for these dollars, we see that the majority of the dollars have been allocated or projected for allocation for a senior center. So the one thing that I'd like to say tonight as a sticking point is that our young people need our attention. It is imperative that we provide resources which never have been there before for our young people. When we look at the criminal justice system and the fact that many of our youth are engaging in activities which end up causing them to be incarcerated, I think our generation is remiss in the fact that we have not provided activities which are affordable. And affordable for many people simply means free. And it is very, very important that we realize that our young people need direction. We've all heard the phrase, rebels without a cause. Our young people are brilliant. We just have not charged them with their mandate for the future. So what we all need to do is we need to take a step back, and we need to look at our children, and I mean that holistically, and we need to look at, based on what we see, where we see our future going. And I think that that will create a sense of awareness and urgency within all of us. We have really got to provide resources for them. Boys and Girls Club is a first step in that direction. I thank you on this evening. I appreciate your time, and I hope that the commissioners are listening to the people who are here on this evening. Thank you.[1026.52][1026.52][applause]
I'm Sarah Billups, and I'm a resident of Stockbridge. I live at 238 North Wind Drive in Stockbridge. I am a member of the Henry County NAACP, and I'm also a retired school social worker. And from my experience, I can tell you how difficult it is to try to reclaim youth after they have been indoctrinated into gangs, and after they have been involved in all kinds of crazy activities. I saw teenagers dancing at 24-hour clubs and doing crazy things. They sold drugs. They did all kinds of things, and what they needed was some type of positive outlet. And I think that the Boys and Girls Club would certainly be one of the ways that we can give them something extremely positive to help them grow. I don't knock funding for seniors, and I don't, and certainly, these programs here are extremely worthy. I'm not knocking any of them, but at the same time, I have to speak and stand with my friend Sheila and say very, very clearly to you that we really, really need a Boys and Girls Club in Stockbridge. The NAACP is presently in the process of trying to start a youth organization, but that's not enough. We really need as many ways as we can to help our kids grow through this crazy adolescent period, where so many things can happen to them and change their lives. We were doing voter registration, and we ran into so many young males who were unable to register because they were felons. They made crazy mistakes at a very young age, and they were still paying for those mistakes. I think that as responsible and caring adults, that we are in a position where we can change some of the lives of the young people that are around us. They don't all want to be involved in drugs. They don't all want to be involved in violence. Some of them want to be able to do something better. And I think that if we take the time and take that money and help them go to a place that is positive, we can really help start them on a road, or continue them on a road of positivity. So I just needed to share that with you, because as a school social worker, I saw so many things. I went in with one idea of youth, and I came out almost blinking crazy with some of the things that were going on with our kids. And what I learned more than anything was they needed a good voice. And I learned that my kids appreciated me because I had a good voice, and there were so many things that they needed to hear. And I'd like very much to see us give the kids in Stockbridge the opportunity to be involved in something positive, to keep them away from a road that could lead to destruction. Thank you so much.[1261.13][1261.13][applause]
I'm Dr. Marilyn Flynn, and I live at 521 Country Club Drive in Stockbridge. I've already expressed my support for the Boys and Girls Club this morning, but at this morning's town hall meeting, I shared with you my concerns about the funds for early start classes, early Head Start classes in McDonough being allocated to communities and schools. My reason was because communities and schools does not share my vision for Henry County Parent Centers. The teacher who got up and commented on the need to provide parents' reading instruction would probably understand the Henry County Parent Center concept. There was also some discussion this morning about the percentage of funds that must be used for facilities. In my submission to each of the commissioners, I questioned why early Head Start was listed under services, when the CDBG funds are to be used to renovate building space to house early Head Start. The teachers and staff that are supported with federal funds from Head Start will provide the services. Until this morning, I had not heard of any plans to bring all of the existing classes from Locust Grove up to the poverty areas in the county. I like that idea. It does concern me, however, that the Executive Director of CIS continues to talk about early childcare and Head Start. The program for children from birth to three should not be referred to as childcare. Childcare is provided for families in poverty under the CAPS program and is managed through DFACS. That's to allow mothers on welfare to go to work, and the CAPS funds help to pay for early childcare. Early Head Start is a prescribed curriculum that is language development-based. The limited literature and information I've provided the commissioners for the past month or so emphasizes the improved early Head Start should be our major priority, and that Head Start and pre-K are too late for the children living in generational poverty. This is the time to challenge ourselves, fund the programs that work, and target the hotspots that create the greatest burden on our economy. If you should see the value in Henry County Parent Centers, I believe the funds provided for the parents at these centers are the services, the ancillary services to be provided for the parents at these centers would come from existing positions already funded here in the county through DFACS, Adult Education, the Henry County Mental Health and Health Department. Please do not trivialize and compromise the services needed to make these children successful learners. I've heard the Executive Director talk about pre-K and Head Start. I keep emphasizing we have to start with early Head Start, children, birth to three. I also want to express my strong support for the First Foundation. I think that is an excellent program. We have to expose children to books, but the children I'm talking about, who are living in generational poverty, many of them come from homes where the mothers don't even read. They come from homes where there's very little verbal dialogue with these children, and that retards the development of their brains. And if we don't reach those children before they are three years of age, then their brains do not develop appropriately, and they will never catch up. We see the discrepancy between children coming from taciturn homes, at least even by the age of 16 months, and it's because of the limited amount of verbal expression that they hear in the environments in which they live. So for that reason, we have to work with the parents. We have to start working with these children in the prenatally. We have to see that their mothers get appropriate medical attention and prenatal care. We have to see that these children get adequate nutrition. Now, I support the Reach Out &amp; Read program, because of one of the good, outstanding longitudinal studies, the Chicago Parent Center program, started with public health nurses going into the homes, working with those families on healthcare and nutrition, and also language interaction and the appropriateness for helping to develop the child's brain. That could be initiated through the Reach Out &amp; Read program, where the pediatricians present the books to the parents, talk to those parents about how to read a book, the importance of their interacting and how to interacting with the baby to help develop the brain, that has to start at birth. Now, they don't have that kind of follow-up in the First Foundation, and we had met with Mr. Griffin. I support his program, but I would like to see some support through the CDBG grants for the Reach Out &amp; Read program as well. I don't want you to cut what you are recommending to the First Foundation. In fact, I would be very much in favor if they do not, if they see some other need to which they can put those $250,000 that have been set aside for the senior center. The First Foundation needs more funding, but so does Reach Out &amp; Read. We have to get those kids who are living in generational poverty. Thank you.[1707.12][1707.12][applause]
Just as a quick point of clarification in response to Dr. Flynn, there is not a cap on facilities. There is a cap associated with public services, that is, at a 15% cap rate, and administration costs are capped at 20%, but that doesn't, there's not a threshold for facilities and some of the other categories. So just want to make sure it's clear.
I question why early Head Start was considered a service, because all we, all I requested was the funds to renovate the space so that we could house the early Head Start program. And again, I'm going to reemphasize that since CIS is managing...
I'm sorry. Can't pick you. I'm sorry, Dr. Flynn. I should've got you before you went back to your seat. I apologize.
Do you want to repeat your question?
Well, I think my question, I just wanted to clarify that there was a, I think you mentioned about a cap on... that there was a, I think you mentioned about a cap on public facilities, but there's actually a cap on public services. That's relegated to 15% of the actual allocated amount and administration is capped at 20% of the allocated amount. Caps do not exist for the other categories, however. So, I just wanted to clarify that point. And then you want to make mention about CIS, I believe.
That they're shifting the priority to Head Start and pre-K. As a matter of fact, here in this community, that's what the E2 Committee proposed, expanding pre-K. They've ignored birth to three. And it's the children who are in generational poverty that we have to reach. Those should be given priority if we can. This is what you're calling economic hotspoting. We have limited funds. So, let's appropriate those funds to serve the population that actually creates more of the social problems in our community. If we don't work with those children who are living in toxic stress from birth to three, and toxic stress meaning poverty, poor healthcare, poor nutrition, abuse, those things affect the development of their brains. And if we don't reach them before the age of three, those brains will never develop properly. Those are the kids that come to school and don't benefit from reading instruction. Those are the kids that end up in special ed. Those are the kids that have to repeat grades and that costs us a lot more money. Look at the prisoners in our jails. The majority of them can't read. And it's because they came to school with brains that weren't mature enough to learn to read. We can hotspot that problem and eliminate a lot of our social problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Daniela Salva Marzal and I am excited to see all the citizens that are here today because that's what makes a difference, is when people participate in their own communities. And so, I'm excited that everyone's here. I'm a mom, but I'm also on an education economics committee with Dr. Maxwell. And I'm here to support the Boys and Girls Club because, one, I have worked with gangs in California and I do believe it makes a difference when children have mentors or young people have mentors because when they have that positive influence, I have to disagree a little bit. I do think in Henry County that kids are listening to ministers. They're listening to coaches. They're listening to teachers. I also do abstinence training in the high schools with the Pregnancy Resource Center. And kids just need to be empowered. They need to be empowered to say no. They need to be empowered to know that they can learn, that they have ability, that they can excel. But you know, it takes people that will encourage them. And I think a Boys and Girls Club would be a pilot to start to do that in Henry County. And you know, I know y'all are going to make the best decision you can because I've seen Henry County work together and there are wonderful people involved, just like Michael Harris. I've been on a committee with you before and you know, from the First Foundation, the gentleman that left, he is one organized man. And I tell you, when you have people like that working together, stuff happens. So, what I would just like to encourage you to do as the consultants and as the community advisors is that you try to pull the people together, like you see here, like Sheila, who know what they're doing and care and try to communicate so that when things are brought together, maybe something's going to be changed. Because I'm looking at this little thingy going, okay. I know, I live in Locust Grove and you know, we have a senior senator that I don't think is being used in the county, did something different with it. And so, I know it has an elevator. I'm wondering if they can do meetings in there and have people use that elevator or have different kind of meetings in that building. You know, I'm just wondering if there are people in the community that the money is being allocated to that could get together, like the Economics and Education Committee, where you find out, like Julie's on a committee too with me, where you find out that, you know, in order to get library cards, you need to have parents with kids so that the rec center can't just ship people to the library to improve reading skills, which is something that the Economics and Education Committee is doing. It's about communication. So, I'm so glad that we're having these public hearings because we do need to talk to one another. And you know, Hands of Hope over here, Diana's one of my personal friends. I didn't know she was coming here. And I have been blessed by Hands of Hope because my friend is still alive. And so, there are so many good causes, but what the sad part is, you know, $4 million, $850,000, you gotta figure out who's going to use it the best. And if you've got somebody who's got a building, you know, for a dollar, I think that's a good start. You know, maybe we can get a senior senator for the, what is it? The Senior Center West? I don't know if that's a whole new building for $250,000. Maybe we can get a building for a dollar. Is that what it is? I don't know. But I'm just brainstorming here. You know, where we can get something for a dollar and use the money for something else. So, as consultants, maybe that's something that y'all can take a look at. But I am pro Boys and Girls and Go America because in God, we still trust in stuff that's happening in Henry County. So, God bless you.
Is there anyone else like to provide any comments?
Hello. My name is Bernard Koffer. I've been here before. And I'm glad so many people turned out tonight. This group right here is saying a lot to you. They're telling you that they want something in their community that's going to improve their children. And what is more important than children? Our money? Our land? Politics? What's more important than children? I can't understand why it's so hard for some of us to do what's right, even when it slaps us in the face. It's just hard for some people to do what's right. Why do we throw money? Waste money? Steal money? But it's hard to invest money in people, young people, who will yield a return to our communities. When we're dead and gone, who are we going to entrust all this to? If we don't invest in our children, why is it so hard to see the need and move to make the improvements and changes? Or do we refuse to see? There are people in this chamber that represent us, the people. And it should be the people's government. And the government should listen. And then the government should move to improve living conditions. I know that everybody on this list is probably deserving. But what I am asking, are there some companies here or organizations that need as much money as they are getting? Or is it, could we break some of that money out and serve a better purpose? I came tonight to bring you 80 more names that want a Boys and Girls Club. I have it right here. I didn't bring it up here. I'll get it. Here it is. I got it. 80 more names. I could've got more. But here they are. Stockbridge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else like to provide any comments? Being known, you know, as we get ready to conclude, a couple of key points I just wanted to touch on. And again, first of all, let me just say how much I appreciate everybody coming out and expressing their comments, expressing their thoughts. And that is greatly appreciated because this is how the process works. As we've said previously, you know, the focus here tonight was to gather the comments. The comments will be forwarded on to the Board of Commissioners and they will take everything into consideration. And that's what the citizen participation process, that's what it involves. I do want to make sure I stress a couple of key points, though. The list you saw in regards to the allocation, that's in reference to this initial first year. That's the annual action plan. Every year, we'll be required to submit an annual action plan, which will be a new allocation signed every subsequent year. At the end of the five-year term, we'll actually be going back through and redoing the consolidation plan, amending the consolidation plan every five years. So, we'll be looking at, we want to make sure we've identified all the community needs, included those elements within the consolidated plan, the five-year plan. ... dollars per year. So, you know, just to get through that list would take a number of years, needless to say. You know, but the goal is to make sure we've identified the key community needs and beginning year one, start addressing those needs, you know, this year and every subsequent year going forward. So, again, that's certainly the goal. You know, obviously, you know, there's a lot of emphasis being placed on the Boys and Girls Club. That information will be forwarded on to commissioners as they continue to review the draft plan. Right now, we're tentatively scheduled for June 18th for the board to make a final decision on the draft plan itself that will be submitted on to HUD. But again, prior to then, the 30-day review period extends until June 14th. So, we'll be receiving comments. You can go to our website. You can provide comments on our website. You can email. You can call our office directly, contact myself. Ms. Sherry Matthews, our planning director as well. And we will receive those comments. And those comments will all be made, will all be forwarded to our commissioners and subsequently be included into the final draft product. So, again, I just want to thank you for your time and your passion and for taking the interest you have in your community. Again, if anything else, if any other questions arise, feel free to notify us. If you know of anyone else who has comments or has questions, please have them contact us and we'll make sure those get addressed and get included into the draft plan. So, once again, thank you again.